I am.
Very much. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on December 10th, 2021, through posting a notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin 19.84. We have some special guests. Commissioner Millar?
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Jennifer Fanning, the principal of Kennedy Elementary School. Ms. Fanning is 26 years in education and four years as the principal at Kennedy. She taught in the school district of Janesville for 18 years. Jennifer taught at Jefferson as a fourth grade teacher, Monroe and Adams as a talented and gifted resource teacher, Jefferson as a third grade teacher, and many summers at various elementaries, Edison Middle School, JSOL, and the head summer school teacher at Kennedy. For five years between teaching and returning to Kennedy as the principal, Mrs. Fanning taught at McLennigan?
McLennigan.
Oh, okay. Elementary. And that's pretty exciting. And at the Cunningham Intermediate School in Beloit. Mrs. Fanning's goal is to inspire the students as she is a lifelong learner herself. She earned a Bachelor's of Science in Elementary Education from UW-Stevens Point, a Master's of Arts in the Teaching from Aurora University, her principal licensure and curriculum and instruction licensure from Aurora University, and is currently pursuing a PhD degree in the Education Leadership and Policy Analysis from UW-Madison. Mrs. Fanning, who do you have with you this evening?
Well, good evening. I am so excited to bring three of our fifth graders here from Kennedy Elementary School, Go Rockets. And we have a selection of our student council members. All three of these members represent their grade level. Mrs. Bulch is their leader in student council, and Ellie McCormick is a fifth grader in Mr. Buckman's class, Sebdiel Gomez is a fifth grader in Ms. Ryan's class, and Juliana Delorme is a fifth grader also in Mr. Buckman's class. And we're so proud to have them represent Kennedy here tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on our agenda is to adopt, on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Show vote.
Okay, Commissioner Ardray, second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Hayward, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Paul, safety message?
My safety message, I think I left it at home, darn it all. My safety message, which I printed out at home, and such is life as a busy mom, it was, is to talk about safety in your automobile in the winter. Because when we are driving in the winter, we face many challenges, not just driving on icy roads, but making sure that we are prepared. And there are some things that you can do by checking the pressure on your spare tire to make sure that is ready. And admittedly, I have not checked mine in a very long time. It's a good reminder to make sure that you have spark plugs, not spark plugs, jumper cables, that's jumper cables in your vehicle in case of emergency, and things like a small shovel if you might need to get yourself out of snow, obviously the scraper for your car to clean that off, but then things like bottled water, some snacks that are shelf-stable in case you are stuck out in bad weather. Sometimes that can happen on our interstates. I think we're very aware of that. And then some things like blankets, maybe a sleeping bag, something for warmth. And for those of you that might have middle schoolers or high schoolers, just reminding them to bring their coat in the car, even if they're unwilling to wear it. That's something that we talk about in our family on a regular basis, since that age group often refuses to wear a winter coat. But having, if you are someone that commutes, having a pair of boots in your car, even if you're not necessarily wearing them that day, but just in your vehicle. So some things like that can be really helpful and may not take up a lot of space in your vehicle, but certainly would come in very handy if you needed them in an emergency. So that's my information. And I did okay, even though I didn't have my printout.
You did great.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you very much.
Can I add to that just a little bit?
Sure.
And I've talked about, those of you who've heard me, where am I at, what am I doing? And to go along with that, what's the weather? So to look ahead, where am I traveling to? And I think about this past weekend, and I think about people that could have been on the road, and just the potential of the weather going through. If you're driving, you don't survive. So just a little bit of understanding the whole route, wherever you're going, what's the weather going to be? And then either you delay or just choose not to go at all, just something else to think about. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Good advice. Okay, student presenters. First, we have from Craig High School, Charlotte Mark. Welcome, Charlotte.
Hello, members of the school board. I am Charlotte Mark from Craig High School. To begin, winter sports are all now in full swing. Senior Olivia Rebaugh helps the Craig gymnastics team place third at their Invitational last weekend with a first-place finish and a school record on the uneven bars. Also this weekend, the boys' wrestling team won the Whitewater Invitational, and the boys' swim team placed fourth at the Parker Relay Swim Meet. The girls' basketball team also defeated Parker 68 to 27. And later tonight, the boys' Craig-Parker game will take place at Parker High School. There, myself and the rest of the Craig-Varsity Palms team will perform a halftime routine, which will be our second of the winter season. In other student accomplishments, students in computer science classes competed in the annual Milwaukee School of Engineering competition on November 19. There, four Craig students worked together to tie for third place against 30 other teams. On Friday, December 3, the Craig baseball and softball teams teamed up to fundraise for Jackson Sparks, a victim in the Waukesha Parade tragedy. Hundreds of students wore all kinds of sports jerseys to honor him, and over $1,300 was raised. Bags of Hope happened this past weekend on December 11. Donations to 350 families and 50 senior citizens were packed and delivered by volunteers, many of whom were students. Around 70 Craig students met at Festival Foods and the Dollar General Warehouse bright and early Saturday morning. Also on Saturday, Craig Student Council hosted the Winter Bash, which hasn't been held since 2019. Located in the cafeteria, students came dressed in holiday pajamas and were able to enjoy music and snacks, including hot chocolate, which was provided by the National Honor Society as part of their winter fundraiser. The Spanish Honor Society also had its members spread festivity, with students spending time wrapping and decorating teachers' doors. This December, many interact club members, including myself, are participating in Dressember, which is a movement of solidarity to raise awareness for human trafficking. To do this, participants wear a dress, skirt, or a tie every day of December. Looking forward, Link Crew will be hosting their annual cocoa and cramb, which encourages students to spend time studying for finals, with the inclusion of hot chocolate. It will take place in the cafeteria and J-room on Thursday, January 6. Christmas break will begin the 22nd with school resuming January 3. First semester will end Thursday, January 13. Subject selection for the 2022-2023 school year is right around the corner, as well as Craig's annual Martin Luther King Commemoration Assembly. To conclude, I would like to, of course, say thank you to the school board, as I look forward to presenting to you all again soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Lots going on there. Okay, next, we have from Parker High, Addison Riley Line?
It's Lean.
Oh, I did it again. I'm so sorry. Lean, I'm gonna write that down. Lean, lean on me. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So my name is Addison Riley Lean. I'm a sophomore at Parker High School. I'm a member of Parker's FCC LA, DECA, SLC, and Science National Honor Society, and I also played volleyball on Parker's JV team this year. For Parker, Parker High School's staff raised over $3,000 for this year's District Bags of Hope Food Drive. On Saturday, December 11, during the event at the Dollar General Warehouse, you will see dozens of Parker students and staff volunteering their time packing and delivering groceries to families in the community. Parker's big give is well underway. There are over 200 students who would not have received a single gift for the holidays this year, but thanks to the Parker staff and Janesville community, that won't be the case. They have really stepped up to adopt all of the students and provide gifts this holiday season. The Parker National Honor Society is planning the first annual Teddy Bear Toss at the December 21 Bluebird Hockey Game. The netting around the ice will be dropped after first period to allow fans in the stands to toss their stuffed animal on the ice. The stuffed animals will be collected and donated to charities such as Toys for Tots, YWCA, Care House, and Children's Hospital. Any student that brings a stuffed animal to the toss will get in free to the game. We're hoping to have a great turnout for the event and make sure this becomes a yearly tradition. Parker's incredibly talented music department is holding holiday concerts, concerts soon. Concerts are free and open to anyone to attend. Come see that the three concert bands perform a variety of concert and holiday music on Sunday, December 11, sorry, December 19, not the 11, at 2:00 PM in the auditorium. Also on Sunday, December 19, but at 6:00 PM, you can hear the various choirs from Parker perform in the auditorium. You can see the orchestra perform on Monday, December 20 at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. This is the first time in two years that Parker students have been able to publicly showcase their talents, and you don't want to miss it. Tomorrow, Parker Pathways is hosting a College and Career Expo. Over 25 industry experts, post-secondary, and military representatives will be available for our students. The first part of the event is a job fair for students and seniors, for juniors and seniors, excuse me. The second part of the event is for our sophomores to learn more about the companies and the career opportunities available in their own area. Transportation drives us forward, impacting economies all around the world and making us all more globally interconnected. Transportation is the theme for the 2021-22 robotics comp, robotics competition season. Robotics competition teams will be challenged to reimagine the future of safe, high-speed travel and lightning-fast deliveries through innovative energy, engineering, creative thinking, and teamwork. On December 5, Parker hosted the Janesville FLL Regional, drawing 22 teams from all over southern Wisconsin in a virtual competition, competitive event. There were 11 teams from Janesville alone, as well as 11 teams from outside of Janesville. Approximately 200 students participated, and another 400 spectators attended the event. That was a good turnout, in my opinion. The first semester isn't even done yet, and Parker's students are starting the process of selecting courses for next year. The Academic and Career Planning Guide Book of Courses is available in both English and Spanish on the Parker website. It has lots of great, great information to help students plan for courses to take in high school that will help with their future work and career plans. If you have any questions, please email or call your student's counselor. Parker is ready to welcome the Class of 2026 Vikings. Last month, one of our student leadership classes hosted these students for eighth-grade tours. Students learned all about the available elective classes, and they are selecting their high school courses this week. Parker DECA hosted study nights for 62 members on November 17 and December 8 to prepare for the DECA competition on January 8 of 2022. The students will be competing in categories such as apparel and accessories, accounting, finance, marketing, management, entrepreneurship, hospitality and tourism, human resource management, and sports and entertainment marketing. I'll let you know during January's board meeting how we did. And let me just say, this school year has flu vibe, because when I read this, I was like, what do you mean, like, January? I was like, but it was right. So I'll let you guys know how that goes. On the Saturday, December 11, Parker DECA partnered with Morning Rotary in conjunction with their fundraiser. 25 Parker DECA members helped build over 1,400 fruit baskets with the Rotarians on Saturday morning. The money from this fundraiser for Rotary funds scholarships, for Rotary Fund Scholarships for both schools and other projects in our community. #ParkerDECA rocks. Parker DECA does rock, by the way. And finally, I hope you were able to see White Christmas sometime these last two weekends. The tap dancing was amazing, and they worked really hard to perfect those moves. Your next chance to see the Parker Arts Academy will begin in February when they present The Sound of Music. And with that said, I'm wishing you all a happy and safe holidays and a happy new year, even though it went really fast. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Addison. Lots of great information. Okay, so we're going to go on to citizen comments. First, I'm going to read a statement. Let's see here. So, "Welcome to all those of those who have signed up to speak to the board tonight. We value your input and interest in our school community." According to, accordingly, excuse me, I'm sorry. "Through school board policy PO 0167.3, titled Public Comment at School Board Meetings, the board allows citizens an opportunity to express interest in and concerns for the schools during the citizen comments portion of school board meetings." "We would also like to remind you that school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of the district. They are not public meetings, but official business meetings held in public. To ensure that board meetings are conducted in an orderly and productive manner, all public comments, no matter the topic, are subject to the following regulations: Number one is a time limit. Speakers will be given one, three-minute opportunity to address the board. This time limit will be enforced. If a speaker continues past the expiration time, the school board president or district official will ask the speaker to stop and leave the podium. Per Board Policy PO 0167.3, adopted on March 9, 2021, the portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited to speak shall be limited to 30 minutes unless extended by the presiding officer." Number two, conduct. Speakers must conduct themselves with respect and civility toward others. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. No person may address or question board members individually. Prohibited conduct includes conduct which is disruptive to the meeting, interferes with the ability of others to observe the meeting or speak to the board, or interferes with the ability of the board to conduct business. This includes conduct which is abusive, harassing, or threatening, and conduct which includes the use of vulgarities or profanities. If a speaker violates this rule, we may prohibit the speaker from further comment at the meeting. Number three, topics for discussion. Speakers may not comment on confidential personnel disputes, share grievances involving individual school employees, do not implicate issues of public concern, or share individual student disciplinary matters, as there are other channels available that provide for consideration and disposition of such matters. Number four, board response pursuant to Wisconsin's Open Meetings Law. Board members are prohibited from responding to public comment unless the topic was identified on the public posting of the board agenda. And number five, recess and adjourn. In the event that an individual's conduct causes a disruption to the board meeting and the board cannot continue its business, the gavel may be used to declare a recess or to adjourn the meeting. In addition, if such conduct constitutes a threat to the health or safety of another individual or individuals at the meeting, law enforcement may be contacted to restore order and safety." Thank you. Okay, so first, on my list, I have, I have two tonight. There they are. First, I'm, my list, I have Ty Bolerud. Mr. Bolerud, when you come up, would you please give us your name and address? Thank you.
Name is Ty Bolerud, 4608 Pendleton Court, Milton, Janesville, Wisconsin. I say Milton because it has a Milton address, but in a Milton school board voting, but it has Janesville utilities, public utilities. And a public utility called Guardian Alitem is a public utility we can't afford, but for whatever reason, this board has never tried to afford a guardian alitem. Instead, we play tricks, like this trick. Eight days, eight days after the mart, or coming, or I'm sorry, 20 days before the Supreme Court decision, and it might have played out in the Supreme Court decision, because no healthcare declaration was made from any school board that we know about. We know that the Madison schools were going to close, we're going to close the schools permanently because of unsafe schools. And we're, we're wondering, is that why we all wear, why the kids are forced to wear masks because the schools are unsafe in their environment? Because that's the only thing that's left over. That's the only choice that you've left. So before we go to the Supreme Court, we would, we would, we would, we would accept from the school board or the superintendent's office a very direct and specific guardian alitem. That's going to look after the kids. We're not asking, we want the guardian alitem to make the rules, period. It's go, go look at them environments. And otherwise, we'll take it and sue the Supreme Court of the state of Wisconsin. That's coming up next. That's what we're going to file. What I've seen down here is ridiculous, and I can't comment on, or witness on how to make it better, which even makes it more ridiculous. When, when you see something like that and you can't even comment. I can say this, I definitely can say this. It has a lot to do with S-Chip Medicaid, Medicaid, Medicaid filing in the state of Wisconsin. It has a lot to do with that. And if this board would look at Act, Assembly Act 446, that didn't pass, it talked about neurobiology, that's what we're, we're needing, and that's what I'm here to talk about. I think we ought to have a healthcare library to challenge some of the automation in Medicaid filing that's been happening with the state of the school board for a long time, and never sending memos from committee to other committee in finance. It doesn't make any sense. It's an intimate domain issue, and, and there's all sorts of government that are not serving memos to all sorts of folks that would, would want to see a change and come testify to, to the fact that, that that's not where they lived in. These masks are no good. We can prove it. We, we might have to go to the Supreme Court to do so.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, I have Victoria Cook. Okay, Ms. Cook, would you please tell us your name and, and your address for the record?
My name is Victoria Cook, 922 North Lexington Drive in Janesville. Good evening. A part of me thought that the last time I spoke, I might have gotten through to some of you. Sadly, if I did, it wasn't enough to make a difference. Speaking in this kind of forum is definitely out of my comfort zone, but is something that I will continue to do as long as I feel like our children are being harmed. Someone needs to stand up for our children, someone needs to advocate for them and push back and get these masks off their innocent faces. As I said last time I spoke, these masks that our children and teachers are wearing only provide minimal protection, if any. There are many studies out there proving that cloth masks do not work against viruses and in return are causing more harm than good. I challenge each and every one of you to look them up and read them. We are masking our healthy teachers and students over the small possibility of stopping a droplet or two. Just in case somebody, some of you aren't aware of the survival rates for this extremely deadly COVID-19 in otherwise healthy individuals, here they are. 99.997% for people ages 0 to 19, 99.98% for people ages 20 to 49, 99.5% for people ages 50 to 69, and 94.6% for people over 70. Now, take a moment and think about what I just said. Think about the unnecessary measures put into place for a virus with an average survival rate of 99.8%. Healthy kids have the most robust immune system. If they do contract COVID, they experience very mild symptoms and have, like I said, a 99.97 recovery rate. Per the CDC's own data, out of 3 million kids in the United States, there have only been 527 kids that sadly passed away from COVID-19, of which the majority had one or more serious underlying health conditions. I'm sorry, but the data is out there, and for what I believe to be nefarious reasons to keep people scared, it is not being openly shared with the public. Each and every one of you sitting up there tonight are in a position of the school board for which I could only hope is because you care about the children you're supposed to be representing. I find it hard for this to be true while at the same time imposing such mandates on our children that require them to cover up the majority of their faces, obstructing their ability to breathe freely, obstructing their ability to interact normally with their teachers and peers. You have absolutely no idea what the long-term effects of this is going to be, and you have absolutely no idea how this is affecting these kids physically and mentally. All I, all you know is what you've been fed by our manipulative media, government entities, and teachers' unions. I think it is time for all of you to put some time and effort into doing the research and look at the actual studies and statistics instead of blindly following institutions that do not represent our children like you do, and clearly have another agenda that has nothing to do with the health and safety of our children. I could almost beg you, actually, I will beg you, to please consider and make masks optional for our kids and end all these unscientific and purely political COVID policies, the social distancing, the quarantine.
Ms. Cook, your time is up.
Out of school.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Whoa, I got it in stereo. Okay. So Commissioner, Darrell House, Commissioner Ardray, on a second. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay, thank you very much. 3.1, update on athletics. Mr. Gardner and Mr. Kruger. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. It's my honor to introduce to you Clayton Krueger, the athletic director at Parker High School. He's going to do a presentation tonight. A.D. McCormick is currently warming up the, the team for the Parker Craig game, so I'll give you Clayton.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me again. I'm just going to kind of recap what happened over the fall season. Obviously, last year, very interesting. So our, our fall season was February through April. And then so for us fall coaches, we're back at it again over the summer, July and August. So it's a quick turnaround, a lot of things that our fall coaches had to kind of adjust with our training and giving those kids time off, you know, to do their spring season that went into the summer and just, you know, recovery is such a huge part of athletics and giving those kids time off in the summer to get going again. When we started in July and, and fall, when we came back in August, September, just, just a lot of positive things. It's just good to be back in a regular season. We had, you know, cross-country, boys soccer, palms cheer, volleyball, girls swim, football, girls golf, and girls tennis. And I sent all you guys a lot of, a lot of positive things, all-conference awards, all-region awards. We had a lot of all-state individuals. We like to bring those guys here. However, you know, on a Tuesday in the winter, it's very, very difficult because we have so many multi, multiple sport athletes. So, you know, maybe looking at a chance between the winter and spring season, we can bring those student athletes here and kind of recognize them there. But at Parker, we had state qualifiers, Lucy and Annie Barnes in girls tennis. And Craig had multiple state qualifiers, Riley Coleman from cross-country, and Ally Donigan in Dakota Reese for girls swim. Girls golf had Maya Nicholson, and something that, you know, we should really be proud of here in Janesville, for the first time in Craig history, that the girls golf team at Craig qualified for the state tournament. So that's an amazing job, amazing accomplishment for those guys. And then girls tennis, Raya Arizola, I apologize if I said it wrong, and Aslan Grund, and that was for girls tennis. Again, a lot of positive things. We had many academic all-state kids, and, you know, when we talk about student athletes, that's probably the number one thing that we lead off with at our banquets, is who are those kids that are making academic all-state? Because it's difficult. Every coaches' association has a little different criteria that they have to meet. I know for football, you have to have a three-point-seven-five GPA, which is phenomenal. We had two kids at Parker and Craig had a kid as well. Overall, we had at Parker, two-hundred-and-forty-six fall athletes out of about twelve-hundred kids that are at Parker right now, which is about twenty-one percent of our student body. And at Craig, they had three-hundred-and-sixty-four fall athletes out of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven students, so that's about twenty, twenty-four percent. As far as COVID is concerned, we had minimal interruptions, we had zero team shutdowns. I don't think we had, I know at Parker, we had no cancellations. I don't think, I don't think Craig had any cancellations either for, for athletics. Zero COVID cases traced back to, to athletic participation, which is phenomenal. But at the end of the day, it was just a positive experience because we get back to some of the things that, you know, mean so much more to kids, like team dinners. You know, we had that opportunity to come back and have spaghetti dinner at our school. You know, bowling trips, our football team can take a bowling trip again. We just got, last week or two weeks ago, time's flying, we just had our Bucks Leadership Day, where we brought SLC and student athletes up to the Milwaukee Bucks to talk about leadership and go to the game and, and stuff like that. It's just the little things that make the experience for these student athletes so important, and they just value that. And that's, those are the types of things that they, that they will remember the rest of their lives, not necessarily, you know, who won against Parker and DeForest in, you know, two thousand and twenty-one. They're not going to remember that. They're going to remember that time that they had together, they're going to remember their coaches. So just, you know, a lot of positive things. Obviously, you guys have in your packets some of the quotes that some of the coaches and some of the athletes shared. Now we're into the winter season. We have palms and dance, cheer, girls basketball, boys basketball, gymnastics, boys hockey. We co-op with Parker and Craig, the Janesville Bluebirds. Girls hockey, we have the Fury, which is a co-op based out of Beloit's. And then we have boys wrestling. New this year is girls wrestling, so the WIAA now has a state tournament for girls. And so what that looks like for Our Lady athletes is they, they compete like they normally would with the boys throughout the year, but then when we get to that state level, they kind of go their path with the ladies, and then the boys go kind of their own path. And Our Lady athletes have an opportunity to choose whether they want to go into the boys wrestling state championship or the, the girls wrestling. And at Parker, our two athletes are going to choose the, the new state tournament. And then we also have boys swim. That's basically all I have. I guess I'll open it up to questions.
Questions, folks? So we have had, so, so we have had a couple of COVID cases, am I right?
So you want athletes? So total, we've had, at Parker, we had seven athletes tested positive.
Okay.
And at Craig, we had eight athletes tested positive. Again, not, not traced back to their athletic participation.
Sure.
We've also had some close contacts. A lot of the close contact that I'm seeing is a family member at home, and so now they're, they're knocked out of our, our sports season for fourteen days or whatever it is.
Sure.
Our nursing staff does a great job communicating, they, they deal with all that, but very minimal. Yeah.
Okay, and I appreciate all of the information about the prevention measures in place, you know, to try to keep things, to, to make it possible for kids to participate, you know? So any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Clayton, I just want to commend you as both an athletic director and a coach. You're doing a phenomenal job leading the program at Parker High School, and kids are getting re-engaged again and, and getting involved, and numbers are growing, and, and the kinds of experiences that you described tonight that, that are part of the program are, are really value-added, and so thank you for your leadership. And I know Commissioner Millard and I are particularly grateful that you had your athletes hang around all the way to the bitter end of Bagues of Hope so that we didn't have to put those tables back in the truck, and they did it for us, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? Well, it sounds, it's, it's exciting to see things, you know, I, I mean, like with participation and things getting closer to normal, and so thank you very much. I really appreciate all your work.
Yes, thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see here, Talented and Gifted. Dr. DeGraff and Stacy Peterson.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Stacy Peterson, principal at Roosevelt Elementary School, as well as the district tag coordinator for our gifted and talented program. So tonight, I have the honor of kind of walking through a little bit about our talented and gifted program in the school district of Janesville. As you may or may not know, that's a sound. One another sound. I'm getting around. Teaching Patrick.
Down button.
Oh, good, it wasn't just, down button goes up. Okay, perfect. We'll restart. Yeah, makes perfect sense to me. We'll go with it. As you may or may not know, the school district of Janesville has been programming for our talented and gifted students since the nineteen-seventies. But in nineteen-eighty-seven, there was a state statute, state standard added, as you can see it here in lots of print, that basically said that our school boards should provide access to appropriate programming for our gifted and talented students, as we currently do. And you can see that in our vision statement. So we took that standard and made that into what we want our program to be in Janesville. And these are a few of the vision statements. Mostly, we want to meet the social, emotional, and academic needs of all of our students and our students that have the talents and gifts to be served. We do want to touch on serving our diverse populations and, again, broadening their thinking and experiences beyond just school. How we do that in the district is through our tag advocates. So we have at least two tag advocates, we call them, in each of the buildings. They are full-time teachers that are appointed by the principals who serve the students. So that includes the identification process. It includes facilitating parents through the process, communicating about what opportunities for enrichment are provided in and out of school. Basically, it's their support system. So we do meet regularly as a group of tag advocates to share ideas, to get some training. Right now, we're doing some math training with our bridges, basically to make sure we're current and we're following similar process and procedures to meet the needs of our kiddos. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what the tag advocates do as well that feeds into our Challenge Magnet Program. So our tag advocates are an important part of screening our second and fifth grade students at the elementary level through the COGAT assessment, and then part of the process of identifying students that qualify under the intellectual tag identification. So that means they're identified overall intellectually, and we look at multiple data points, including the COGAT, to see if they would qualify. In, in all of this writing, it does talk about how it meets the needs of about three to five percent of our district of students that qualify and are identified to, to participate in the magnet program. It is by invite, so parents always have the choice to opt in to the program or to opt out and remain in their buildings and be serviced or take advocates in their general or teachers, but still have the identification and have enrichment programs through that. So a little bit about the challenge program. It did start in nineteen-eighty-three, so we've been servicing and using this model for over thirty-five years. It started in our fourth and fifth grade. We added third grade in two thousand and twelve, so that is why we screen in our second grade, and then we screen with the COGAT again and other data points in fifth grade to make sure we feed into the middle school appropriately and meet the needs of our students that way. Just a little bit about the challenge program. We have, over time, participated in the Javits Study, in a project that worked with us about how to not only identify students that might not be the high achievers that rise to the top automatically, but to help identify them and help them emerge as achievers, and to look at grouping students, both in the challenge program and gen ed, for how our learners learn and to make sure we're getting all students that might benefit from this type of programming. Another point I have up here is kind of a misunderstanding about the, the programming and testing. I know the worry sometimes is when students are coming from one building in, you know, or several buildings into one program, what that sort of does for test scores and, and kind of those learners in the buildings they're feeding from. And so I put in here a little bit about, certainly, we'll go into what the challenge program does for these learners, but that those high-scoring kiddos coming into the challenge program, with this study we did through the Javits, talked about how that allows for those learners that are just under that layer of the kids that qualify in the intellectual needs can then rise to the top as well. So it provides that opportunity. And our top-scoring kiddos that come in are those students that don't necessarily make large gains, and we'll look a little bit about that in the testing. And so it doesn't necessarily impact dramatically in the testing realm, as it's sometimes misunderstood. And again, part of the review of the challenge program, over the years, we've had external studies. This was one that was done in terms of how is the program working for our students? And so as you can see on the right-hand side, students who qualified for the challenge program and did attend versus the way right column of qualified but did not attend, again, very high-scoring students, but if they did attend, we were able to significantly raise their scores and show achievement there through their attendance. And how we did that is, is how a challenge classroom is structured. So a challenge classroom looks different in this very simplistic way, that a challenge classroom is every day, every minute. So it's not a pull-out once in a while, or sometimes when it's available or the resources are. It provides that all day with peers that are all at the same level versus a cluster of kiddos. And the accelerated curriculum means that we do work about a grade level to a grade level and a half ahead of their aged peers within the challenge classroom, so we can kind of pace through differently to meet the needs. And they are in challenge classrooms with trained teachers who are trained to work with talented and gifted students versus general ed without that experience and training. So this is just a little thing. I know if you would like more information, I can certainly share about the myths about gifted kids, but I think generally, it's thought that kiddos are fine in the regular ed setting in classrooms because they're gifted, so they'll be just fine without the support. And that's actually a myth. The truth is, they do need to have that support to grow to their full potential, as you saw in the external study. And so we want to give that opportunity to our intellectual students to make sure that they have every opportunity to learn and grow as well. So we do have a three-to-five-year plan that Allison and I have been working on in, in terms of just areas of growth and things we would like to do to make sure we're servicing our students appropriately. One thing we recently kicked off was we added information to the website. So when we shared with a subgroup of you this summer, that was a takeaway that parents didn't know, how do I know who my tag advocate is in my building? How do I know what the challenge program is? How do I access information about tag? And so we've added that to every school and on our main website most recently. And one other thing we're doing, obviously, as you know, is, is looking at how to best model the program to meet the needs of the students and the students in our, in our schools. So we continue to do that and, and work with our tag advocates to make sure that we are pursuing all of our plans and implementing them appropriately, and then monitoring the growth of our students. Do you have any questions for me that I can answer?
Questions? Question, Millard?
Great presentation, by the way. If there's an influx of students, do you have a plan in place? Like, say, if there was an influx of middle school students, do you have a, a plan where you would house them if there isn't enough room, say, at the school that, you know?
Right, so there's a qualification that happens for the program with the multiple data points. So what we do similarly to staffing plans is look at our students ahead of time that we know. We haven't had thirty-five kiddos move in that our tag identified. If they want to, come on over to Janesville. But we do identify, and like right now, we're pulling some data points of our second graders so we can go into the process in spring. So we have a general sense of that pool of potential students and then can plan with the staffing plan appropriately. You know, and obviously, it follows the trend of the school district with declining enrollment. We've had a decline in, in that population too. So we don't have any major surprises. If they are, we welcome them, but so far, we've been able to plan accordingly. And obviously, when we've looked at buildings to place the programs in, we look at what does that mean in the, the long run to not just this current school year, but do we have room in case we expand or reduce programs, if that makes sense?
Other questions or comments? Oh, yes, Commissioner Hayward.
Can you discuss a little bit about where the tag program is for elementary and middle school? What schools it's in? What school?
Yep, so currently in elementary school, we have Roosevelt housing the third, fourth, and fifth grade, third grade being the only section right now. And then Washington currently houses fourth and fifth grade. We have made the transition from Madison to Washington, if you remember. So currently, it's just Roosevelt and Washington. And then at middle school, currently, it's Edison and Franklin. And again, it had been at Edison, and we had added the Franklin program with the Westside, Washington, Madison. And so those are our current middle schools, Edison and Franklin.
Thank you, and I think it's really important that, also to call out that those are the kids who qualify for in multiple criteria. There's also still tag programs for, yeah, at every school, you know, maybe it's math and they are, we still have opportunities to challenge children's learning, even if they aren't qualified for the whole program.
Yeah, and that is a confusion point. Sometimes they're thought of as one and the same, and truly, it's tag, gifted and talented, and then challenge is one avenue for a specific, you know, student within that label. Sometimes they're thought of as one in the same and truly it's tag, gifted and talented, and then challenges one avenue for a specific, um, you know, student within that label of, of programming, correct? You are very correct.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't have a question. Um, a lot of this information was presented to us at PPC, uh, earlier and, um, I really appreciate some of the questions that we did present. Uh, you know, you brought answers to us and, um, the website. I'm excited to see that. This is a really wonderful program. Janesville is very fortunate to have this great programming. Many districts don't have these opportunities and I think it's important that we celebrate that. And so, um, thank you for the work and everyone involved for doing that because it's meaningful for our students. So thanks.
You're welcome. Um, I call it the hidden gem of Janesville and of Wisconsin truly. I did have a cold call of a parent from the Verona School District within the last, um, few weeks and she was looking for her school, you know, to have some information and, and she was directed from DPI to call Janesville and find out about our programming. And she too thought that it was a lovely little gem that we have here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very much. Okay, um, staffing assumptions are next. Mr. Garner.
Good evening again, uh, Commissioners. Uh, as you know, every year we, uh, look to start planning for next year. And what we're doing, and a part, big part of my job is to plan for staffing for the, uh, following year. We, we usually present this to you in March, but we want to make sure that we're all on the same page with what we're going to use for our boundaries when we do our staffing plan. And we want to make sure you guys are aware of that in case there are questions or concerns. They really are the same. Um, there are two, two pieces here that are different. And one of the things that we've looked at, um, for this year, and this is a team effort, I will tell you, much like we did the, the calendar, uh, together to meet the needs of where our teachers, uh, what our teachers need as well as our students with the curriculum. Uh, I met with, uh, Al and I, Chris Menenwald and Allison DeGraff to look at where, where are academic concerns and how can we help, uh, kind of catch up on those achievement gaps that, that are occurring? So to, to number eleven, that speaks to Chris's work with middle school principals. And really, we're looking at some achievement gap areas in terms of ELA. And so what we've asked the board to at least know about is to give us some flexibility with the middle school staffing as it pertains to that particular piece. And we don't know the impact of that. There may be no impact, but, uh, what I'm saying is we might want to be able to staff a little bit under what our current policy is, just to make sure we have even teams order love, uh, for the needs of those particular students. And I would, I'd identify all of those to you during the staffing plan when I presented that, if, if in fact that's the case. But we would, we would allow that, uh, if possible. Uh, we'd like the board to give us that flexibility. And I also added, based on the board's preferences this year, I heard a lot of you ask us to staff our kindergarten and first grade classrooms at a little bit lower, uh, ratio. And so if you look kind of in the fine print here, and I don't have my readers, but I can do this if I stand back, uh, main, right, yeah. Maintain some flexibility as it results, uh, as it pertains to kindergarten and first grade with the staffing. We used to do cutoffs at twenty-three point five and we did attempt to do that this year using some ESSR monies and we would still have that available next year. Uh, we would have to do some talking if this is more of a permanent type of decision the board would like to do it after the ESSR money is gone. That's something that we would have to have a discussion about, but we certainly can do that. Uh, we, we had, we were very successful in reducing most of the K-one classrooms this year. There are three in particular that we couldn't, we couldn't find the people to fill the sections. And so, uh, it wasn't for lack of effort, we just didn't have the, the staff there. So are there any questions about our staffing assumptions?
Questions? No, I don't have any.
Okay.
Any yet. Thank you though for.
Sure.
Setting the stage.
Yeah, this is the stage that we will frame our staffing plan on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, so discussion and possible approval to change the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendars to include the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a non-school day for students and optional workday for staff. And so this was brought up by, um, Commissioner Murray, so I will, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. If everybody would take one of each of these, what I'm handing out are the memos and the attached calendars from January nineteenth and, um, November the ninth, in case you want to follow along. First of all, thank you President Myers and Superintendent for allowing me to, this opportunity to talk about the calendar. What I'd like to do, uh, President Myers is to, uh, make a motion and then if there's a second, go on and explain the why and reasoning behind it. Before I make the motion, I did vet my motion through, uh, the board attorney. So it is appropriate, uh, based on how the agenda item is written and it would simply need a, a simple majority, uh, if you so choose to support it to, to pass. So therefore I'd like to make a motion to rescind the November ninth, twenty-twenty-one motion to approve the revised calendar for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as well as the calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Okay, thank you. So, um, the first thing I wanted to talk about is, um, if you look at the calendars, well, let me, let me start here. We have what's called ERT, early release time, or in some places they call it comp time. Anyway, in the, in the school district of Janesville, early release time is given to staff, um, in lieu of pay for work done outside the regular workday. And, um, for an example would be, um, if you were participated in an IEP after school or during the summer, you would, you could get ERT time. Or another example, please correct me if I'm wrong, you guys. Another example would be if you, because we know there's a teacher's, uh, substitute shortage, when a staff member backfills to fill for a substitute, um, they are given the choice of, uh, pay and or ERT time. But, um, what I learned was there is a, uh, a number of staff members that have accumulated, um, large banks of ERT time to use. So, where, the reason I bring that up is the, uh, in my opinion, the revised calendar from the November ninth revision limits the availability of staff to use ERT time. And the ERT is, ERT time is given to staff for going above and beyond. So if you give people this ERT time and they can't use it, there's really no benefit to it. But, so on that calendar, if you look at the calendar from, uh, twenty-twenty-three from the nineteen, January nineteen compared to the revised one, from what I learned too, where it says OW, that's an opportunity to use ERT time, option workday. Where it says PDW? That would be on the original draft. WPD or PDW, yeah. It's sometimes it's written both ways. Where, where there's a W, that is also a possible time to use ERT time. Or where it's just a simple W, workday, that is also a possibility. But if you see on the revised calendar that we, that we approved, it's very limited time to use the early release time. And I think that's important. If we have staff members doing above and beyond and they're rewarded with ERT time, but they can't use it, um, I don't think that's appropriate. So, and also in the revised plan, um, so let me start with this way too. I also learned that, and, and I should say too, if you support this motion that I made, it reverts, and I vetted this through our attorney, it reverts back to the January nineteenth calendar. It doesn't reduce PD days. Because professional development is important. It doesn't do that. That is one thing that the JEA from my discussions wanted, of course, is last PD days. But it doesn't, it doesn't do that if you support this. If you notice, uh, a little bit of history, um, there was a point in time, uh, before Superintendent Pufall was here, that's, the school year was getting over, oh, like June twelfth, somewhere pretty late. And, you know, it was in, it was starting to push back on summer school and getting out too late. And therefore, um, we started to move PD days in August. So we, we pulled the PD days out of the calendar and put them in August. Therefore, the school year got shorter where it ended. And what I learned too this week was, um, the research and data shows us that having professional development in the early part of the year beneficial, is beneficial because it gets the staff on the same page and off to a good start. But I must also say though, that, uh, it was explained to me too, the importance of having, uh, professional development periodically throughout the year as well. So it does, this motion does impact that a little, right? Please.
Can I interrupt? So based upon what you just said, if you revert back to the January nineteenth calendar for twenty-twenty-two, twenty, oh, sorry. I need reminders. So if I'm, if I'm following you, Kevin.
Yes.
Your last comment about the going back to the January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three calendar.
Yes.
You would go back to front-loading the professional development. As opposed to the one that was approved where it's kind of, I'll use the language, sprinkled throughout the year.
Correct.
But the advantage of reverting back to it, if, if, if I'm following you, is that it would provide more ERT for the teachers who have earned that, correct?
It would maintain that.
It would maintain it where the one that we approved doesn't maintain it. So there's an advantage and disadvantage.
Yes.
Cause I, I'm for having more ERT opportunities.
If I may, uh, that actually is an inaccurate statement.
Okay.
So.
That's why I'm asking it, so you can clarify.
We used to have optional workdays and typically we had two. We, we used to have three, okay? People had to work two out of three and then we had two and teachers had the opportunity to work one out of two. Uh, so, uh, literally they had that one day to use ERT. Uh, there was maybe another day in there, uh, within the year, but it's typically two days that they had the, the opportunity to do that. Uh, and just so you guys are aware, the, the calendar that we asked you to per, uh, approve in November allows for, I counted, there's several different days. For example, uh, we have November fourth, which allows our middle school and high school staff members, it's a workday, they don't have responsibilities, they can use that ERT time during that day. November eighteenth would allow the elementary schools to use that time. We have February twenty-fourth with the same type of, uh, thing as well as then March thirty-first. So there are several days that they can use ERT during that time. Just for, just to make things accurate, make sure we're accurate.
Thank you.
Scott, can you clarify just a question? Are, are staff able to use ERT for PD at the beginning of the year if they were to want to use ERT at the beginning of the year?
Uh, they are not during PD, staff are not allowed to use it for PD, obviously because we believe that PD is important.
Yeah.
Uh, it's worthwhile, we want to make sure that we're present for that.
So also, I might add that this, if you support this motion, it just reverts back to the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, whereas the revised motion also added in twenty-three, twenty-four, the revision. So what I'm saying is, another logic for my making this motion is to go back to the original option that we approved in January and to address the other calendar year, twenty-three, twenty-four, I would hope that the new superintendent would reconvene this committee of stakeholders and explore many other options for twenty-three, twenty-four. And a lot of those options could be, I'm thinking way out of the box is, what have we learned from COVID? Do we need six days a year dedicated for conferences? Can we do something there with attendance for school days for professional development? Can we start to think again about when we used to have early release days? And I know that we got rid of those for numbers of reasons, but we also had days where staff stayed after school, if you will, to get professional development sprinkled through the year. So I think another component for me making this motion is that we, we really should had done, in my opinion, a better job of getting the stakeholders together and developing these calendars. And as far as the, the PD, um, this, this year, some of the days are called PDW, personal days, workdays, combination. And I was shown that in the calendar this year, there are some days during that, that's time in August where, um, some of the delivered training was able to be done by video. And I believe it might have addressed health and safety, some things that you could do that wasn't during that day. And then you were able to use ERT time this year. But the new revised calendar doesn't say PDW, it just says PD. So therefore, there are, like Scott just said, there's no opportunity to use ERT time.
But he did just mention three, like four dates that they were able to.
Sure.
To do that.
Yeah, and we wanted to, to be, to be clear, we wanted to make sure staff knew exactly what, cause what we had were people trying to get out of PD so they would use their, try to use their ERT. So we want to be very clear about what was PD, a PD day and what was a workday. That's, that's the only reason we see that.
And then the revision inserts two PD days in the calendar that we didn't have in option one that we approved in, in January. And those PD days, there's one in particular that I was concerned about is the day before. Well, when you insert PD days into the calendar, the new revision, those are non-school contact days. So now you have to find two new sc- school contact days. And the revision, what the revision did was extended school year by one day and are making the kids go to school the day before Thanksgiving. In my opinion, based on what I hear from staff, extending the school year, having one more day at the end of the year for school contact days? We all know what it's like when you're exiting the last, so, and also therefore the day before Thanksgiving. I think that too is at, at risk of being a real quality school contact day. Also, the revised plan, if you look at option one, it says a hundred and seventy-one school contact days. The revision is a hundred and seventy. So not only, so, I guess I can just, um, leave it at that and just summarize that if you s- support this motion, it would revise back to the option one calendar that we approved in January. And then administration, and I would hope the new superintendent would reconvene the committee and work out the details for twenty-three, twenty-four.
So. So, I understand where you're coming from, and I do understand the, if you revert back to the January nineteenth calendar for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, I understand the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I do, I understand that a lot of people go away, they're with family. My pause is just going back to having all that professional development front-loaded at the beginning of the year. Because I think of myself as a learner, as an adult learner. I also think of, you know, the teachers. I don't, I don't learn, I don't think anybody learns at one chunk at a time. I need professional development sprinkled throughout the year. I don't, that's like cognitive overload. But that's just my opinion. I don't know, maybe you could shed some light on it, because I've been out of teaching for a long, long time, Kathy. But what do you see useful as a teacher?
Well, I, I mean, I appreciated, when the district first front-loaded all that PD at the very beginning, I did appreciate the intention, you know? But I think that there is a good argument about having too much at the very beginning. Because honestly, when you first get to school, all you want to do is get into your room. You know, and get set up. And you want, and you want to learn your class lists and, you know, and start to work on names and make everything look nice and organized so that when kids get there. And so, you know, I do believe that there should be some PD at the very beginning of the year, but I agreed actually with, you know, with a lot of teachers that probably was too much, even though the intention was good. And so I do like PD spread out. And, you know, so, so that's what, you know, that's one of the advantages I see of the, of the calendar that was provided here later on. What was that?
The November fourth?
November fourth, yes. So I also, I also have some concern. So if you, if you bring back, if the intention of this is to offer a non-school day or an optional workday for staff the day before Thanksgiving, well, something's got to give. So where does that, so, because you've got to have them meet some other time. So where would that go? Because my concern is that if you try to tack it on to the end of the year, then you are possibly interfering with summer school and other programming that we have. And so, you know, that's not good either. You know, but we have to, it has to go someplace. If you don't have student contact on that day before Thanksgiving, it's got to go someplace. Now, and my, and my third issue here, and perhaps I'm, no, I'm not going to apologize. My third issue here is that we all looked at this and we all approved it on a nine-zero vote. And I feel like if this is about the day before, well, all of this for the day before Thanksgiving, honestly, I don't know that it's worth the trouble.